Welcome to the June meeting of the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority. Thank you all for being here. Our agenda today includes reviewing the adopted budget and revised four-year financial plan of the City of Buffalo and to consider a resolution to approve the financial plan as a whole. We will also review a proposed labor agreement between Buffalo City School and the Buffalo Education Support Team, BEST. Additionally, the Audit, Finance, and Budget Committee met earlier today to review the final BFA budget for the 2021-2022 fiscal year and the accompanying four-year financial plan, and has recommended this item be approved by the full board. Let's begin today by having Executive Director Rowe take the role. Thank you, Jeanette.
You are welcome. Chair Olson is excused. Vice Chair Jurisak?
Present.
Thank you. Secretary Floss?
Present.
Director Sanfilippo?
Present.
Mayor Brown?
Present.
County Executive?
Present.
Secretary Floss, there is a forum present.
Thank you. Let's move on. Before moving to our first item, Chair Olson, who couldn't be with us today, has a statement to be read on his behalf related to the comments made by the Common Council pertaining to recent communications by the BFA. And I'll read that statement. There have been recent discussions at Common Council meetings regarding BFA's non-cooperation and late submission of reports. In order to set the record straight, the report referenced by Common Council, being the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority's analysis of the city's 2021-2022 proposed budget and the 2022-2025 financial plan, was submitted by BFA staff to Common Council on May 14th. Common Council approved the budget on May 20th. Sufficient time was provided to consider our analysis and the findings prior to the council's deliberation on this matter. Second, the request to meet with Council was made one day prior to the council's meeting and could not be accommodated by BFA. In lieu of not being able to be at the meeting, the Executive Director indicated she would discuss any questions on any matters in the report with any council member or council staff. No questions were received. Finally, the council president's comments that BFA submitted the report to council 20 minutes before deliberations on the final budget is inaccurate. BFA did not submit a new item to council on May 20th. A copy of the resolution approved by BFA the day before was submitted. The same draft resolution had been provided to council on May 14th. Additionally, for their convenience, a copy of the analysis and report as provided on May 14th was also enclosed again, as stated in the letter. As a matter of simple fact, Common Council members have falsely charged us with delay and non-cooperation. We continue in our call to request for a collaborative relationship for the open exchange of information in working towards the same goal, which is the fiscal stability of the city. And then he says, "Thank you." Just so that I can respond, I think on a number of occasions, a number of the board members have said that they are more than happy to meet with council, to talk to any of them outside of our board meetings if they had questions or wanted to know information. And I know that we have invited them to all of our meetings. So I hope that we could cooperate, and I hope that this incident will help us come closer together and work for the City of Buffalo. Vice Chair Jurisak, do you want to say something?
I think it was approximately 12 months ago, and during one of our extraordinary meetings because of extraordinary times, I clearly remember someone from council charged with budget management, budget matters, that there was a joint agreement, a pledge by that subunit of council, as well as Chair Olson, to work constructively and more purposefully than we ever had in my memory 10 years on the Stability Authority. So how should I put it? They are on record as looking for, anticipating constructive, ongoing cooperation. And now Chair Olson has reinforced that with his letter, and I am echoing it because we had a verbal pledge that we would be doing exactly what Director Floss just said. That is to say, we should and we shall. That was the declared joint intent, work openly and constructively.
Thank you. Director Sanfilippo, I just saw you. Did you want to add anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Our first item of business then is to approve the minutes from the BFA May 19th, 2021 board meeting. Directors will find a draft of those minutes and the accompanying resolution in your board book under tab 2. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
It's moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Chair Jurisak.
Okay. Are there any corrections, deletions, additions? Hearing none, I'll move to a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Our next item of business is to review-
Director Floss, what is the disposition now of the two-minuted items? That is to say Chair Olson's letter, absolutely not a complaint, a constructive declaration, and your comment and my comment. What is the disposition of that now?
First, I think we wanted to put on the record and set the record straight that we were in compliance and that there obviously was some confusion over the information that we submitted to the Buffalo Common Council. And we wanted to make sure for the record that we corrected it to be, for those folks to realize that yes, we had submitted things in a timely fashion. While there may have been some confusion on Common Council's part when we tried to be even more helpful by appending our past letter and recommendations to the second request that they had, that none of that had changed. So we want to make sure that everyone knows for the record what happens. Director Sanfilippo?
Well, I just think it'll be, that'll be considered in the minutes of the next board meeting.
Yes.
All right. And then, yes, it'll be duly recorded and show in our minutes. And then do we communicate it to share it with the appropriate subset of council?
I think we could do that. I would, since it is Chair Olson's statement, I would like to check with him before we do any additional work on this statement. But I think that that might be appropriate after we talk to Chair Olson.
All right. Just fine.
Say with you?
Just fine.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chair Jurisak. So again, our next item of business is to review the final adopted budget and four-year financial plan of the City of Buffalo. The City of Buffalo's 2021-2022 adopted budget was submitted to BFA with revisions to the financial plan on June 1st, with a corrected submission on June 2018. I'm sorry. The submission also included revisions to certain revenue estimates in the out-years of the plan. A copy of the mayor's submission and a BFA report on this item is provided under tab 3 of your board book, with the corrected submission from the mayor emailed separately. For the record, the corrected submission addresses unintended changes to the out-years of the financial plan and brings the amounts consistent with that we reviewed at our May meeting. Bryce, would you review this item with us?
Will do. One moment, I'm just trying to pull up the presentation. Good afternoon, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board today. Make sure I'm not muted. All right, thank you. Total estimated projected revenue over the four-year financial plan was not modified. However, revenue sources and amounts were revised in fiscal years '23, '24, and '24, '25, related to adjustments to projections of the marijuana and tax revenue. Overall, no change to total budgeted expenditures from the proposed budget. Individual expenditures in the adopted budget '21-'22 were modified by Common Council in the amount of $1.6 million. However, the expenditure adjustments are not carried forward through the three remaining years of the financial plan. This slide should look familiar from our May 19th meeting. It just identifies the four years of the financial plan, and over the four years, expenditures and revenues are balanced. And financial plan over the four years totals approximately $2.2 billion. The Common Council's change, common council's changes result in a net total increase of $1.6 million to departmental expenditures. In the City Clerk Department, an increase of $1.4 million for Common Council Neighborhood Initiatives. Common Council is a department, there's a net increase of $135,000, consisting of $119,500 for hourly salary for legislative staff, and $15,500 for three title modifications. In the Audit and Control Department, that is an increase of $65,800. $38,400 of that is for service contracts, $12,600 for personal service costs, $8,800 for professional development travel, and $6,000 for supplies and equipment. In the remaining departments, it is a net increase of $25,300. Of that, $15,300 are for three title modifications, and then there is an increase of $10,000 in contract services. These departmental increases are funded by a budget adjustment and corresponding reduction to active employee health insurance in the amount of $1.6 million. The adopted budget amount for active employee health insurance is $44.3 million, which is an increase of $5.3 million over the prior year budget amount of $39 million. And as I previously mentioned, these changes on the expenditure side only impact fiscal year '21-'22. And you can see the changes here on the screen. We have departmental total and general charge total. You'll see a reduction of $1.6 million under fringe and a corresponding increase in the various departmental costs, with approximately $163,000 for personal services, $8,900 for travel, supplies at $5,500, and services at $1.4 million. Moving on to the modification to revenues in the out-years of the financial plan, fiscal year '23-'24 and fiscal year '24-'25, the original estimate for the marijuana tax was $16 million each year, which was deemed high. To address the reduction in that amount, the city will utilize an additional $14.4 million in the federal ARPA funding and has adjusted the marijuana tax to $1.6 million. In fiscal year '24-'25, the city has included an additional property for sale, which is estimated at $13.4 million, and then included the marijuana tax at $2.6 million for a total of $16 million. So those revenue changes can be seen in a little further detail here on the next slide where we break it down over the four years of the financial plan, where you see the intergovernmental funds adjusted, net impact of zero in fiscal year '24, and then a reduction of $13.4 in fiscal year '25. That reduction of $13.4 is offset by the increased sales of city-owned properties in fiscal year '25. Financial plan stays balanced over the four years. That is the end of my presentation, unless there are any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, we'll now consider the resolution to approve the financial plan as a whole. At our meeting held on May 19th, 2021, we reviewed the financial plan as submitted to BFA dated May 1st. At that meeting, we concluded the four-year financial plan of the Buffalo City School District, the Buffalo Urban Renewal Agency, and the Buffalo Municipal Housing Authority were compliant with the requirements of the BFA Act. With respect to the city's financial plan, we required supporting documentation be provided for certain revenue items. On June 8th, 2021, the FSA reviewed the district's 2021-2022 adopted budget, noting a financial plan revision was not necessary. Finally, today, we reviewed the city's revised 2022-2025 financial plan. The draft resolution related to our review was provided under tab 3, which you find in your book, and finds the four-year financial plan complete and meeting the requirements of the BFA Act. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
It's moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, questions, or issues? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Abstentions? The motion passes. Okay. Now we can move on to the school district and the labor agreement. I want to thank Mr. Kusma for coming today to answer any questions. I think I signed there. So welcome and thank you. The superintendent submitted to BFA with a request to review a proposed labor agreement between Buffalo City School District and the Buffalo Educational Support Team, or BEST, representing teachers' aides, teaching assistants, and healthcare aides. A funding plan was subsequently submitted on June 15th. Materials related to this matter are provided under tab 4 of your board book. The BFA staff analysis was emailed separately to you. Nathan, can you review this for us at this time?
Thank you. The following is the Buffalo Fiscal Stabilities Authority's analysis of the proposed successor agreement between the Buffalo City School District and BEST, member of NICIM. Just to start with, some preliminary information about the collective bargaining unit. Their previous agreement had expired back on June 30th, 2012. This successor agreement would become effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2025, and covers teaching assistants, teacher aides, and healthcare aides. Following BFA's review, the Buffalo Board of Education will consider approving the successor agreement on Wednesday, the 23rd. Successor agreement provides updated wage schedules and annual increases. The immediate healthcare aide and teacher aide increases from the old schedule to the successor agreement schedule are about, it's about a 10.5% increase. And then the out-year increases over the agreement's life are about 2.3% annually. I've separated the teaching assistants because it's a little bit more significant from the old schedule to the new schedule. There's anywhere from a 31% to a 38% annual rate of increase from the old to the new one, and then the similar 2.3% annual rate of increase over the life of the agreement. This was put into place as an incentive for the teaching assistants. Teaching assistants are New York State certified, and so it was deemed proper to incentivize this group with a higher starting wage schedule. We'll review some of the additional compensation increases, the first of which is a signing bonus. Current and active full-time unit members who are on the payroll in the 2021 school year will receive a one-time signing bonus based on their service years at July 1st, 2021. And then the part-time employees get 50% of the bonus. So employees with less than one service year do not get a signing bonus, but then thereafter, anywhere from one year up to 21-plus years gets between $200 to $2,500 for signing. The next additional compensation area is longevity payments. Employees who have completed at least nine service years receive an annual longevity payment in addition to any other compensation, including their hourly wages. Effective July 1st, 2021, successor agreement amends the longevity schedule as seen in this table here. The amounts are, the amounts received annually are increased, and also you can see that there are new tiers past year '23 where it's staggered, going up from $1750 to $2,100 to $2,500. Then some miscellaneous compensation increases for extra activity. The first of which is unit member position responsibilities. Any unit member assigned to provide primary support to a classroom in the absence of a teacher or substitute receives $5 an hour stipend along with their regular rate of pay. In-service training, all employees who take part in this program outside of normal working hours are compensated at the unit member's standard rate of pay. This is an update, it was previously $6.25 an hour. And then finally, unit members working with students with special physical management needs, these unit members whose duties require this work, receive an additional two hours per hour. We talked about the different compensation increases, there's been some benefit changes as well. The first of which is with sick leave. Unit members who work at least six hours a day and 30 hours a week are credited with an 11-day sick leave allowance with full pay. This is what is included now. A maximum of 180 days may accrue, earned at the rate of one day for each month of service during the school year. The first change within the sick leave area is that the previous contract allowed for the creation of a sick bank, the successor agreement eliminates this benefit. Newly created is a sick leave incentive. The successor agreement establishes the sick leave incentive. For unit members, they earn up to four incentives per year. And so the table shows, per period, what the incentive is. Anywhere from zero sick days in the period receives $150 incentive. If you have one or two, there's a lower incentive, and then there's four periods per work year. So the maximum amount you can receive is $600. Moving along to active employee health insurance. Employees who work six hours daily and 30 hours weekly receive hospital and medical coverage under the BEST medical care plan. The successor agreement establishes that active employees will begin to contribute toward their health insurance premium. There's the 0% contribution now, there's a fixed contribution rate effective July 1st, 2021. It's $250 for single coverage, $500 for family coverage, and then, as you can see in the table, the amount increases up to 300 for single to 600 for family. The successor agreement also establishes that eligible employees are entitled to receive the traditional blue 404 healthcare plan, 404 plus healthcare plan. This is a transition away from the BEST managed plan. Unit members are transitioned to this lower-cost plan within 60 calendar days of the contract's ratification. Then, I won't go over the numbers, but you can see that the single rate and the family rate are lower with the traditional blue plus 204 and 204 plus. Then, beginning January 1st, 2022, the parties agree to work collaboratively to effectuate the district's transition to coverage, covering the healthcare program, and then effective one year later, the district will administer their health insurance program for active and retired unit members. And there were some miscellaneous terms that are provided within the report, but we'll just briefly bullet them out here. The successor agreement adds some contractual language related to active health insurance in the following areas: coverage during leave of absence, notification of family status change, spouse eligibility, open enrollment periods, re-enrollment, and insurance committee Currently, employees are eligible for health insurance, may be eligible for health insurance at retirement. They have to be employed by the district and must have completed at least 13 active service years. These employees and their spouses, retirees and their spouses, must take Medicare Part B coverage at age 65 to maintain their district-provided health insurance, unless the retired pays a certain amount to maintain the district-provided health insurance. Now, this is not an option that many retirees opt into. Some of the retiree health insurance changes within the successor agreement. Active employees who retire under successor agreement are provided the same traditional blue 204, 204 plus health insurance plan and contribute the same-
I believe we lost Nathan.
That is okay. I am now the host, and I will pick up where he left off. I won't do as good a job, though.
Thank you.
All right, bear with me for a second. Share screen. Employees, they may be eligible for health insurance at retirement. There's a minimum of 13 years that have to be completed before an individual would be qualified for retiree health insurance. And another change is that retirees and their spouses- And another change is that retirees and their spouses must take Medicare B coverage at age 65 to maintain their district-provided health insurance unless the retiree opts to pay $100 a month to maintain the district-provided health insurance. Changes within the successor agreement are active employees who retire under this agreement are provided the traditional blue plan that was available to active and active employees. And they contribute the same amount so that contribution amount stays the same into retirement. Active employees who retire must enroll in both A and B upon eligibility. And all employees and their dependents who retire under, well, the employee who retires and depends subsequent to to the retirement would pay 100% of Medicare Part B's cost. The district does have the opportunity to cancel a retiree's health insurance for failure to maintain both Part A and Part B. Active employees who retire under the agreement. Oh, this looks like a little bit of a duplication. So retirees and spouses are required to move into the lower-cost Medicare Advantage Plan at eligibility with current rates provided on the screen. And future employees, importantly, a very important change in the contract is that future employees will no longer be eligible for health insurance provided by the district at retirement. Additionally, there's various contractual terms, more minor ones that are included involving retiree health insurance. There was a $40 a month in lieu of health insurance payment that was provided to retirees under the the previous agreement that has been eliminated in the successor agreement. Various miscellaneous contractual changes, I won't go through what these are. They're included in the report, but just to point out that there were several new management rates that were built into the labor contract. So looking at the cost, the signing bonus, the intent of the signing bonus is to be recorded as an expenditure this fiscal year for the year ended June 30th, 2021 of approximately $1.4 million. The total cost of the contract, including the signing bonus increase in compensation and fringe benefit increase is just shy of $29 million. Healthcare savings related to not only the contribution from employees, but also moving from the higher-cost best plan into the lower-cost district plan is intended to save 2.6 million over the next four years of the financial plan with an estimated net cost of 26.4 million. I know Nathan went through this analysis that the district provided in very good detail with the CFO, and we're very comfortable with these numbers.
Jeanette, just a quick question. Is the signing bonus going to be able to come out of the federal COVID money at this point? Since this is covering the period of COVID, so is that at a legitimate expense for the school district out of their federal monies? Is that how it's going to be done?
At this time, the district is anticipating using their surplus that they they project for 21, or what year are we in, 2021? I'm not sure Nate, if you're possibly able to answer that question, if the our funds have been reviewed for possible use for this purpose?
I I think you're correct in terms of the cost of the one-time signing bonus is going to be the surplus from from this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So the first chart that Nathan puts together, this is the all funds and then broken down into how much is estimated to hit the general fund. This varies depending on how much they're allowed to push into the special revenue fund to be paid through grants. But based on history, a certain percentage goes into the general fund and a certain percentage goes into the special revenue fund. So for the general fund, the net cost is estimated at 22.1 million. From a funding perspective, I got 22.1 million, so we're looking at just the general fund on this slide. Again, the projected surplus for 2021 is anticipated to fully fund the cost for the current fiscal year. Moving forward, it's a couple different items are being viewed as being possible funding sources. The first one is the amounts that were already built into the adopted financial plan of just under 2 million. There were 1.5% increases that were included in the financial plan to account for step increases, loss attrition. These dollars are now available to be allocated towards the contract costs. There are projected surpluses over the financial plan that are being applied against the increased cost. Those would have been increases to fund balance, but they're being redirected. The financial plan that the district has put together conservatively kept fund balance at flat levels over the financial plan. And incremental change to that. There is a contingency reserve that the district has budgeted for annually. And the funding for this contract includes an reallocation of some of those funds into the contract costs. And then the final one, which pushes into the last year of the financial plan, is utilizing a portion of that assigned fund balance that was set aside specifically for the use of or specifically for contract negotiations. It's not on assigned fund balance. It is important to point out that that was purposely set aside for contract negotiations. So the successor agreement, oh, now I'm up to the summary and recommendations. So the successful negotiation of this labor contract provides the district with a a final estimate of where actual labor costs will be over the entire four years of the new financial plan. It provides raises to a labor group that has been out of contract since 2012 or for nine years. There are various updates to management rates as discussed in the report and touched on by Nathan and myself. More significant contract changes include the implementation of the new sick leave incentive, employee contributions for active employees towards health insurance for the first time. It moves the health insurance out of a best-provided program into a district-provided program. And it also shifts the administration of the program from the union to the district by 2023. The new labor agreement requires spouses, retirees and their spouses to move into a lower-cost Medicare Advantage Plan upon eligibility. The new labor agreement establishes that future hires will not be eligible for district-funded health insurance at retirement. It also includes new wage schedules, which increase teaching assistance substantially more from the 2012 wage schedule to assist the district in attracting and retaining New York State certified employees. With respect to the net estimated cost for 2021, the cost will be funded through the district's general fund of 1.4 million. The district had projected and continues to project a year in surplus that is more than sufficient to address this increase in labor costs. The incremental labor costs for years 22 through 25 are funded through a mix of the use of contingency reserves, surplus funds that were built into the financial plan, and existing fund balance. Fund balance, of course, is a non-recurring resource, and it's advised that recurring resources be identified to fund ongoing recurring future incremental cost increases. The financial plan dated May 1st is no longer consistent with the incremental costs and sources of funding identified for years 2022 to 2023 to 2024, 2025. And it is recommended that the BFSA Board of Directors require the submission of a modified financial plan to solidify the funding plan for this labor contract as reviewed today. I want to emphasize that we're very comfortable with the estimates that the district put together. We're very comfortable with their funding plan for this labor contract. This would solidify, as mentioned, would solidify the information as provided to BFSA and update the financial plan accordingly. That summarizes the our comments on this, and I will turn it back to you, Chair, Secretary Floss, in sharing the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Let me just thank the school district and thank Nate for all of your hard work in this. You know, as as we have said before, for the city of Buffalo and its covered organizations to really be in balance, it's not only having the income statements and balance sheets balanced, but also having individuals under contracts so we know what the costs are going to be in the future. So we appreciate you doing that. And on a personal note, if I might, I want to thank you for my normal complaint, which is that single coverage was always more expensive than family coverage. That you've corrected that in this contract, which I think creates the appropriate incentives. And I think over time will lower health insurance costs for everybody in the district if we get the right incentives in. So I wanted to thank you for doing that. That's probably been a 10-year issue with me or something like that on contracts. So I I do really appreciate that. Are there other questions either for Jeanette or Nate on the budget? Andy?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Jeanette, cheers up. Do you have any?
I have a question. There was a collision of analyses of point of view across the last two years or so. It was our opinion that the district was not setting aside enough money to negotiate out-of-contract agreements. And just refresh my memory, the term annual contingency is that financial plan amount set aside to negotiate contracts, correct? So annual contingency is that money set aside, which we had regularly communicated from our point of analytic point of view to the district, that their number was too low. So the first question is, is that what the contingency, annual contingency is? It's the set aside to negotiate labor agreements?
Executive Director Rob, do you want to answer that?
I I can answer that. So my, the first question is, is the contingency reserve specifically for labor contracts? And the 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 quick answer to that question is not specifically. I guess there is not a quick question to that answer. So the the district, what the district does from a standpoint of budgeting for increased labor costs is they don't include it in the body of their financial plan. They include step increases minus attrition. So across the board, they include a 1.5% increase. But for the negotiating of labor contracts, they have a bucket of fund balance that they assign that's available for negotiating for labor contracts. And that is the bucket that we have referenced, saying that it would not be, it's insufficient to cover all of the costs to bring all the labor contracts up to date. Now, contingency is just just that. It's for contingent, like things come up that weren't planned for, and those those funds can can be reallocated. So the the amount that's assigned for contract negotiations is 9 million. And the annual general contingency is 1.5 million, which out of a, you know, out of a budget as large as the district, it's it's a small contingency that's provided.
All right, thank you. And I do remember that number, that 9 million had been earmarked, pre-earmarked for the additional costs, potential additional costs in renegotiated labor contracts. That was what was in the district's budget, but our analysis was it wasn't enough. So what what is our, what is our analytic point of view now? Do they have, there's so many moving parts in their budget. Is this moving part taken care of? The classroom teachers, for example, their contract is very expensive. And I'm sure soon that will be renegotiated. Do they have enough in designated fund balance for contracts?
The the quick answer to that is no, they don't. So the district puts together an estimate of how much it would cost annually if all labor contracts were to come current. So that estimate was roughly 40 million. They have 9 million set aside, so they're.
That's right, I remember the shocking gap between our understanding and their understanding.
Right, so there would need to be identification of funding sources. They do have other, you know, sources of fund balance available. Of course, we always advise the caution of using one-time fund balance dollars for recurring increases due to the fact that.
Is there an individual from the board of that on the call that could comment on this?
Nate, would you like to comment?
Yes, colleagues, I I believe the issue is on on the, one, on on the contingency fund. The district, certainly that's at the superintendent's discretion as to whether he wants to use that contingency for the settlement of labor contracts, which he may, or he may use it for other things such as staffing and providing staff to buildings. Once the school year gets going, you know, it's sort of called an equity overlay, you know, in the event that there's more staff needed at a particular building, that that money could be used for that. And that's sort of the genesis of it, to give him that flexibility to provide additional staffing if need be. The district does set aside money for its contracts in its fund balance, which, of course, you all should be aware is quite a healthy fund balance. You know, comparatively, we are well in excess of what our our policy minimum is. We have made the decision not to target all of that money for contracts or to name the specific contracts in which that money is being set aside for. You know, I guess we could do it the other way, but we have chosen for a variety of different, you know, strategic reasons not to do that. But we do believe within our fund balance, you know, we do have, we have certainly budgeted well. We've saved well, and we do have the resources to, you know, negotiate in good faith and settle contracts. And in fact, there will be some, there will be some others coming your way in the very near future. Now that, you know, the 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 financial uncertainty of the pandemic has sort of been lifted and alleviated. We are at the table with a number of different groups and have two other contracts that are settled or close to being settled that will be coming your way.
All right, so in other words, you're pretty confident that you have the resources available to handle. available to handle the contract negotiations to completion?
We do, yeah. Within, within reason, maybe not in somebody else's mind, but you know, if you're sitting on the other side, you may, you know, depending on what your notion of a fair settlement is, but I, I think we are of the belief that we have enough resources to settle our labor contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? This, if not, may I have a motion to approve a resolution requiring the submission of a revised financial plan by the Buffalo City School District by July 12th?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, Nate, is that enough time for you?
I know that they emailed July this, you put till the end of the first week of July?
July 12th. I guess it's the second week.
Yeah, I mean Jeff, I don't think he's been off and I mean, I can't speak for him because that will primarily be his work. And usually that plan then has to go back to the Board of Education to be approved by them. And our Board of Education meeting, I don't think is until after the 12th. I'm not sure whether historically it's come to you before it's, it went to our board for approval. But you know, I think for Jeff and he could, thinking how he would, I would appreciate till the end of July, if at all possible.
Executive Director Rob?
That, that should be fine. We reviewed the mechanic, like we reviewed the detail today. So I, that'll be fine.
Okay, so the motion would now be the end of July and we can leave it open to what day that actually is. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Abstentions? None? The motion passes. Nate, I want to thank you for coming today. I want to thank the, the school district for working with us on all of this. I think we're moving in the right direction. So thank you very much for all of this.
You're most welcome. Thank you for your work.
Great. The final item of business is to affirm the recommendations of the Audit, Finance and Budget Committee to approve the B F S A 2021, 2022 budget and the 2022, 2025 financial plan. This document is included under tab one of the board book along with a summary of changes. The adjustments related to revising state aid estimates to be consistent with the enacted state budget. The accompanying draft resolution is included under tab five. May I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to ask, I have some questions regarding the budget.
Sure. Why don't we accept the motion and then we'll move into the discussion? So.
I'll move to the first.
Okay, second?
Second from Jurisec.
Thanks. Okay, Andy, what are your questions?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions relative to the, or some concerns regarding the professional services expenses and the budget. Is there, do we have any idea what the legal fees, litigation and other professional fees actuals are for 2021?
We have a projection for 2021. The budget mechanism that has been implemented, I'm just going to provide a little bit of some comments surrounding that because it's something that we talked about at our finance committee meeting. Is that in order to provide a constant level and an anticipated level of expenses for budgeting purposes to the city of Buffalo, we maintain that a level amount and we have for a number of years. The reason for that is twofold, one of which is if we were to enter into litigation and we have a mid-year budget increase because of it, there's a series of reporting that has to occur due to, I forget what the exact wording is by the Office of the State Controller, but it's basically it's detrimental to the budget. So we anticipate that based on past history, we're going to include an amount for litigation, knowing that we don't have any right now and our projections take that into consideration.
Right. Well, one thing, Jeanette, what do these legal fees, litigation and my professional services consist of?
The legal fees consist of our fees from legal advisory services from McGovern, McGovern and Grimm.
Okay.
Our professionals, that would be litigation as well if we were involved in litigation. Those would be legal fees. Other professional fees would include any financial advisory services that we procure, our accounting services, auditing services, not accounting, auditing services. Every two years we're required to have an O P E B valuation. So there's some software costs included in there.
Okay.
There is
Well, you know, I was, I'm looking at, you know, the narrative and they, they look at professional fees as being the second largest category of operating expenses. And if you go through the 2020 actuals, legal fees were 15,000 and change, or litigation was zero and other professional services were 18,000. And if you look at the budget, and so that's about $33,000. And then you look at the 2022 budget, it comes up to 235,000. That's over $200,000 difference between the 20, the 2020 actuals and the 2022 budget. So I thought that's a pretty significant difference and I, you know, I don't have all the historical data that perhaps you guys have, but just looking at the past two years, but I don't have the 2021 actuals, but looking at the 2022 budget seems to be pretty high.
Right. We have been fortunate to not have incurred any litigation expenses. So that would be the one bucket. And then the second bucket for special projects really. So if there is a project that a board member or the board wants to be conducted, but we don't hold the internal expertise, we do budget funds so that the board has the flexibility and the availability to, to request special projects.
Okay, because I was just wondering, you know, are these expenses necessary at these projected budget levels? That's all. Seems to be pretty high to me.
Okay. Jeff? I, was the out year that we were looking at, was that the year where we had bond counsel? And the analysis of that, was that why that was high? When we were looking at whether it was cheaper to, was that the professional services that may have been higher than normal?
We did conduct that work this year. We, we spoke about the payment of those. That is still in process. So there's an amount, an estimate included in there for that. For those services, Director Floss, yes.
Director Sam Philippo, any other question?
No, I don't have any other questions. Like I said, I was just looking at these professional services and what they, you know, what they consist of. I'm sure there's bond lawyers or they're financial advisors or investment bankers or whatever management fees we pay. That's all. I just didn't know. And looking at the history from 2020 actuals to 2022 budget, I just thought it was a little bit excessive. From a budgeting standpoint.
Yeah, I think the, the forecast was definitely prepared more conservatively. Now that, you know, we've had several months of experience since then, we do not forecast utilizing $60,000 in professional fees.
Yeah, see without knowing the 2021 actuals, then, you know, it's tough for me to make another assessment as to, I'm only working off 2020 and then looking at the 2022 budget.
Sure.
And I don't have the 2021 actuals, so I really, you know, don't know, you know, how successful my argument would be regarding these budgeted levels.
Executive Director?
Are there any estimates on the 2021?
Well, our 21 actuals and we'll close our books around the middle of August. Our year end is June 30th. I could certainly get back to what our year end accounts are.
Not being privy to, you know, your internal discussions and analysis, you know, that's, I'm just looking at this at face value. So I apologize, you know, for, you know, not, you know, having that background.
I, I don't think there's any reason to apologize, Director Sam Philippo. I think it's a legitimate question and
Oh, I know Jeanette and she'll hold it against me.
So Executive Director Rob, if you could get the information to Director Sam Philippo, that would be great.
I will do that.
Well, Director Sam Philippo, this, this is Jurisec and you bracketed inside your initial question, you don't have historical context. You know, the expenditure patterns inside here. This much I can offer. I can recall a few years after the Great Recession broke on all, on all of us, that we commissioned a study after Detroit defaulted. We commissioned a study. Could this happen at our end of the lake? So you know, there, there's sort of our traditional legal and research costs, which just feel very, how should I put it, legal. And I, I can recall that we use this category for, for just as I said, commissioning a study that was beyond the capability of our own analysts. And I'm sure Jeanette and, and other old hands can provide more, how should I put it? Dragularity and context to how we've been using this fund. So
But with all due respect with the American Rescue Plan, I don't know if we're going to have to go through worrying about whether or not the city of Buffalo is going to be another Detroit or Stockton, California.
Well, as I said, that was
To engage that sort of a report, I wouldn't think is, would be imminent anytime in the near future.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that's a, how should I put it? A typical repeating cost. I just was trying to provide it some historical context for how we use this category.
Okay, no problem.
Hey, thank you. Is there any more discussion? If not, we can move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
I'll abstain.
Okay, so noted. Director Sam Philippo has abstained for the record. Is there any new business? Hearing none? Before we adjourn, we always ask, although I do not see anyone on the call, but if any member of the public wishes to make a comment or ask a question at this time, but I don't see anyone on the call at this point, but I want to make sure we continue that tradition of making sure that we ask before we leave. This concludes the meeting of the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority and I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Aye. Goodbye.
Have a great day, everyone.
Everyone have a great day.
Thank you.